May I ask Mr. Braswell to re-enter open session? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. We -- Mr. Blaine is under the weather this evening. He will be joining us for the first part of the meeting via telephone. And we will start with Dr. Meyer leading us in the Pledge Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 You have to make a -- (pause) Ms. Graham, do we need to make a motion to -- okay. We're not there yet. My apologies.
(noise) (noise) Okay. (pause)
At this time, I'd like -- we have two moments of silence. It's with much sadness, I share that Michael Fox, who taught at our Career and Technical Center for nine years, passed away on January 4th after a long illness. Please join me in a moment of silence in honor of Mr. Fox. He touched the lives of many and will be missed tremendously.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like the Assembly to join with me in a moment of silence for Coach Ken Brown. Coach Ken Brown was not only a longtime employee of Spotsylvania County Schools, he was a renowned coach, not only in this area but throughout the state. In fact, he was a Hall of Fame coach. Coach Brown was responsible for Cortlandt, leading Cortlandt to four state championships. He recently passed on the 17th of December. I had the great opportunity to meet with him, and we shared as coaches, but more importantly as men. And he was a very honorable man, and he was a great leader of men. How -- why do I say that? Well, it is true that you can tell a tree by its fruit. And Mr. Ken Brown had trained up great coaches that follow his great example. Coach Holcomb, Coach Hall, Coach Tim Coleman. These names are well-known throughout Spotsylvania County, and these coaches have dedicated their lives to the uplifting of young men to be able to win in the game of life. And so, it's with great sadness that I say that Coach Brown passed from us. But it was a great honor to have had the opportunity to know him as a coach, but to know him as a great man. So if you would, please join me in a moment of silence to recognize Coach Ken Brown. Thank you very much.
And I'd like to thank Supervisor Benton and Supervisor Ross, I believe I saw them earlier, for joining us this evening. And now, Ms. Shelley, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we allow Mr. Blaine to join us via telephone.
Second?
The motion by Ms. Shelley, a second by Dr. Meyer, to let Bill Blaine join in the meeting via telephone. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. And now, we will get the technology going. (pause) Okay. So, on to 7.01. First part of this evening's meeting is focused on the reorganization of the school board. Pursuant to the Virginia Code, Section 22.1 through 72, the board is required to establish a meeting schedule for the coming year. And Section 22.1 through 76 mandates that the board organize and reorganize annually with the election of officers at the first meeting in January. This reorganization includes a selection of the Chair, Vice Chair, approval of the Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and Superintendents designated to attend meetings in the absence of the Superintendent, approval of the meeting schedule for this calendar year, and confirmation of the School Board Code of Ethics. As the current Chair, I will preside at the selection of the Chair and then transfer the gavel to the newly-elected Chair. The Chair has multiple responsibilities for which the Vice Chair will need to fill in, if needed. Some of these responsibilities are the following: presides at regular meetings, special call meetings, workshops, joint meetings with the Board of Supervisors, and the school board closed-session meetings; facilitates and moderates discussion among board members seeking consensus as appropriate using Robert's Rules of Order; prepares board committee assignments; communicates regularly with other board members keeping them informed of school matters; maintains an ongoing contact with the Superintendent on relevant school matters; prepares board agendas with the Superintendent; takes the lead on contract negotiation, evaluation, and goal-setting with the Superintendent; takes the lead on developing priorities for school board annual goal-setting and board professional development; prepares and delivers in conjunction with Vice Chair and the Superintendent the approved school board budget presentation to the Board of Supervisors; signs contracts, officiates minutes and resolutions approved by the board; and approves board member travel reimbursements online and signs board member expense reimbursement vouchers. These activities and duties require considerable time and dedication by the Chair and Vice Chair. This list is not all-inclusive but does provide some idea of what is entailed with the duties and responsibilities of the Chair and ultimately the Vice Chair, if needed. These leadership positions are critical to the effectiveness of the board. And now, we will proceed with the selection process. Board members, I will begin with opening the floor for nominations for Chair of the Spotsylvania County School Board for the 2018 calendar year. Mr. Braswell?
Madam Chair, I'd like to open the nominations for Chair by nominating yourself, Ms. Erin Graham, for a second term as School Board Chair. This is the first year that we have amended our policy to allow for a -- two consecutive terms. I believe that your performance over the past year is warranted for a second opportunity to lead this board into the next year. And with that being said, I nominate Ms. Erin Graham.
Thank you. Mr. Braswell has nominated myself, Erin Graham, for Chair. Are there any other nominations for Chair? Hearing none, may I have a motion to close nominations for Chair?
Madam Chair, I motion to close nominations for Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer to close nominations for Chair, and a second from Ms. Shelley. Roll call vote starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Phelps abstain.
Braswell, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Twig, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Graham, aye. Motion carries with six ayes, one abstention from Mrs. Phelps abstaining. And at this moment --
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion then to approve Erin Graham as Chair for the Spotsylvania County School Board for the calendar year 2018.
Motion by Dr. Meyer to approve myself as Chair for the 2018 calendar year, and a second by Ms. Shelley. Again, with a roll call vote starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Phelps abstain.
Braswell, aye.
Twig, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Graham, aye. Motion carries with six ayes, one abstention from Mrs. Phelps. And I'm now supposed to congratulate the newly-elected Chair.[630.04][630.04](laughing) And I'm passing the gavel to myself. Okay. So now, we will open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Dawn Shelley as Vice Chair. She has stepped into the position with the absence of Mrs. Blaylock and has assumed those duties and responsibilities. She has exercised this position before, and she is definitely qualified to be Vice Chair.
Dr. Meyer has nominated Ms. Dawn Shelley for Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, may I have a motion to close nominations for Vice Chair?
Make a motion to close nominations.
Motion by Mr. Braswell to close nominations for Vice Chair. Second from Ms. Shelley. Roll call vote starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Phelps, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twig, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Graham, aye. Motion carries 7-0 to close nominations. Can I have a motion to approve the first nominee for Vice Chair?
I'll make the motion then to approve Mrs. Dawn Shelley as Vice Chairman for the calendar year 2018. Second.
Motion by Dr. Meyer to approve Ms. Dawn Shelley for Vice Chair, and a second by Mr. Braswell. Any discussion? Roll call vote starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Phelps, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twig, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Graham, aye. Motion carries 7-0 for Ms. Dawn Shelley to be the Vice Chair. And we will move on to the Clerk of the Board. Motion to approve Dr. Dennis Martin as Clerk of the Board.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Ms. Shelley, to approve Dr. Dennis Martin as Clerk of the Board. Any discussion? Roll call vote starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Phelps, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twig, aye.
Mr. Blaine?
Blaine, aye.
Graham, aye. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Dr. Dennis Martin, for willing to be our Clerk. Deputy Clerk of the Board, motion to approve Mrs. Patty Bowler as Deputy Clerk of the Board.
Move to nominate Ms. Patty Bowler.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Braswell, second by Mr. Twig, to approve Mrs. Patty Bowler as Deputy Clerk of the Board. Roll call vote starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Phelps, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twig, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Graham, aye. Motion carries 7-0. Now, move on to the Superintendent's Designee to Attend Meetings in the Absence of the Superintendent, and that is Mrs. Carol Flannard.
I would like to make the motion to approve Ms. Carol Flannard as the -- in the absence of the Superintendent, whatever it was you said.[847.56][847.56](laughing) Thank you.
And I'll second that motion for --
Motion by Ms. Shelley to have Mrs. Carol -- Carol Flannard -- I don't know why I'm doing tongue-twistling tonight -- as the Superintendent's Designee to Attend Meetings in the Absence of the Superintendent, with a second by Dr. Meyer?
Yes.
Roll call vote starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Phelps, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twig, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Graham, aye. Motion carries 7-0. On to the Board Calendar for 2018. I can add a motion to approve the Board Calendar that was distributed.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer to approve the Board Calendar for 2018.
Second.
Second by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion?
I just have one question. I saw a couple of typos, and I just wanted to make sure they were corrected. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're good.
Okay, roll call vote starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Phelps, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twig, aye.
Mr. Blaine?
Blaine, aye.
Graham, aye. Motion carries 7-0. And last, the Code of Ethics. I need a motion to reaffirm the Code of Ethics as specified in Board Policy.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Braswell to reaffirm the Code of Ethics, with a second from Mrs. Phelps. Any discussion? Roll call vote starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Phelps, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twig, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Graham, aye. Motion carries 7-0. We can now change our seats with those members who have seniority choosing their seats first after the Chair. I am staying where I am. Ms. Shelley is staying where she is. And now, to seniority, next would be Mr. Blaine, and he is electing to stay where he is. Dr. Meyer? Mr. Braswell? Mr. Twig?
I'm fine.
Mrs. Phelps? The seats are now changed.[983.62][983.62](laughing) On to item -- hold on one second. Mr. Blaine?
Yes.
Thank you very much for joining us. I'm gonna hang up now. Is that okay?
Yeah, and congratulations to everybody.
Well, thank you, sir. Get better.
I will. I'll see you Friday.
Okay.
Okay, bye.
Bye. And on to item 7.03. The committee list was attached to this agenda, and I have sent emails requesting -- met with most of you who have accepted the invitation to meet with committee assignments. If you have not met with me, please -- Dr. Meyer had a good idea, and he just printed out his -- the committee list that was attached, and he put his top five choices. And so, if you would like to do that and make sure that I get that before the next meeting, I will take that into consideration. And on to item 8.01, public hearing. We have a pre-public hearing on the FY 2019 budget. Dr. Martin?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The pre-budget public hearing provides an opportunity for the public to make comments at the Board at the beginning of the budget-building process for the 2018-19 fiscal year. At this time, speakers must limit their comments to those pertaining to the upcoming budget or budget process. School Board policy requires speakers to state their name, address, and/or voting district for the record. Students may state their name and school. Each speaker is allowed five minutes to address the Board. And I just want to -- I think we have one person that signed up for, but I think she -- the person signed up on the public presentations, I think, Dawn Napper? Nap -- is it Napper, Napier?
Napper.
Napper. Just want to clarify, did you want to address the Board under the public presentations or the pre-budget?
Uh, the budget.
Okay. Then you can come forward now.
I would like to address some budget concerns. We have been cutting our budget back for years because the supervisors kept saying they did not have the funds to fully fund the schools. Now, there is nowhere left to cut, and it is affecting employees and students both. You are now facing a crisis as you must fully fund the Evergreen Study. To the midpoint, the same as the supervisors have started to do and will continue to do for their employees. It would not be right for school employees to receive anything less than equal treatment. The supervisors have had a $7 million and $12 million surplus the last two years. The time has come to present a budget that covers all of the schools' needs without backing down when they claim they do not have the money to fully fund the schools. It is obvious they have more than enough, and it is time they did what was right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's all the speakers that signed up specifically for the pre-budget hearing.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for the pre-budget hearing? Mrs. Palmer, would you like to join us?
Hello. I'm back here much sooner than I thought I would be. I guess I missed you guys. But when I heard there was a public hearing on the budget, I wanted to take a moment tonight to share a few thoughts. So first, I want to express my opinion that recent calls for level school funding, I think, are ridiculous. I think most of you understand that, but I wanted to say it out loud because if I and other reasonable Spotsylvania citizens who understand the importance of supporting our public schools, if we don't say it out loud, then those with extreme and alternate agendas are the only voice in the room. So I'll say it out loud and for the record. As a tax-paying citizen of the county, I will enthusiastically support a school budget that has been carefully and thoughtfully prepared, that demonstrates the esteem in which we hold our dedicated and talented staff, and that recognizes with resources the importance of public education. I believe it's your job as a governing body to work closely with staff to understand the costs that we must pay, those over which we have no control, those that are essential to a well-run school district, and those that are, quote, "extras," at least compared to recent budget years. Once you've approved the budget, I expect you to wholeheartedly and enthusiastically defend that budget through the process. We may not get everything that is needed or wanted, but let's not begin budget season assuming that our schools must continue to, quote, "make do with less." Every interaction I personally have with schools, I come away grateful for what the staff has been willing to do to support student success. But I always think to myself, wow, imagine what would happen if they had the resources they really needed. So I just want to say I think it's time that we stop imagining and start making it happen. Thank you so much for your time. Oh, I forgot. Catherine Palmer, Lee Hill District. Thanks.
Is there anybody else in the audience that didn't sign up that would like to speak?
Yeah.
It's Jackie Williams.
I'm Jackie Williams, and I live in the Berkeley District. I only have one question, and possibly it's been answered and I missed out on it. Is there an implementation plan for the Evergreen Study? Will we know how and when each step will come? Thank you.
Good evening, distinguished public servants. My name is Jean Bergeron, and I'm the President of the Spotsylvania Education Association. I also live in the Battlefield District. I'm here tonight to welcome our newly-elected Board Member, as well as our familiar faces, and to share with you greetings for a Happy New Year. The mission of the Spotsylvania Education Association is to unite our members and community in fulfilling the promise of a high-quality public education that successfully prepares every single student to realize his or her full potential. We believe this can be accomplished by advocating for students, education professionals, and support professionals. This is exactly what we will continue to do. SCA will never stop advocating for our schools, students, and staff. Tonight, I stand before you as our fiscal year 19 budget cycle officially kicks off into high gear. Each year, you debate the components of a needs-based budget. Each year, things fall off the budget because the supervisor won't support it. Enough is enough. As our elected officials, you are tasked with creating a budget that meets the needs of all students and your staff. Per your Code of Ethics, I will always remember that the foremost concern of the Board is to improve and enhance teaching and learning experiences for all students in public schools of Virginia. You must fulfill that obligation in this budget. I call on you to fully fulfill the Evergreen Study. I stand before you as a veteran, citizen, taxpayer, homeowner, voter, educator, and the President of the SCA, direct you to put schools first. We demand action on your part, on behalf of the schools, now. I will now revisit your Code of Ethics Regulation BBC R. Eight. I will bring about desired changes through legal and ethical procedures, upholding and enforcing all laws, state regulations, and court orders pertaining to schools. Nine. I will refrain from using the Board position for personal or partisan gain, and avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety. Ten. I will respect the confidentiality of privileged information and make no individual decisions or commitments that might compromise the Board or administration. Recently, there have been numerous articles which lead me to believe that one of you has violated this very code. I call on your fellow Board members to address this issue appropriately and remind all of you your duty to Spotsylvania County. It is time to show your constituents that you care about more than your party line. Excuse me, Ms. -- It's time for one Spotsylvania. I'm done. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that hasn't signed up that wishes to speak? Okay, Mr. Fortenhour.
Good evening, Board members, members of the community, those present in the audience. My name is Peter Fortenhour. I teach at Ny River Middle School, and I live in the Battlefield District. And everyone's favorite time of the year is here again, budget season. And the process is beginning the way it always does, but it seems to me that once again, the process itself is going to be part of the challenge that you face because your timeline schedules you to adopt your budget two days, or, excuse me, three days, before the county administrator presents his proposed budget to the supervisors. This is an issue that has popped up repeatedly in the past that I believe predisposes some of the budget process to hoo-ha, as is the only word I can think of to use it, because it's impossible for the school division and the county to adequately coordinate the needs that you will identify and the priorities that you may have, and weave those together into a budget that the supervisors can deal with unless there is communication ahead of time and before that day. Once again, we're going to have to work with some handicaps because of that. Hopefully, this year, state funding will not be one of the handicaps you face. The Governor -- outgoing Governor McAuliffe has put forward more money in the state budget for K-12 education, although a large portion of that is for re-benchmarking the standards of quality. So although there looks like there's more money coming from the state, that is the money the state has determined is the minimum necessary to maintain the current level of service that the state requires. Spotsylvania County, along with every other school division in the state, routinely meets and exceeds the minimums that the standards of quality puts forth. I am hopeful that, given election results from November and with Governor-elect Northam appointing a classroom teacher to become the next Secretary of Education, that we will see a state that is more willing to live up to its constitutional obligation to fund and maintain a high-quality level of public education throughout the state, and that will bring benefits to Spotsylvania County because if there is more money coming from the state, that should alleviate some of the need for the Board of Supervisors to carry more of the load by continually finding local funds to do what the state by the state's constitution should have been doing all along but has not been doing so. I will be in Richmond lobbying members of the General Assembly in this upcoming month and asking our elected officials in Richmond to do just that. It is in everyone's best interest for our students It is in everyone's best interest for our students to have a better school division. We have needs that, over the last 10 years, have been piling up, and I would urge you to go back and look at some of the things that have been considered in past budgets and put to the side because the board felt that there were other needs that were a higher priority or that funds might not be available, and a request for too large an increase in funding for the schools might not receive a pleasant welcome in the supervisors' chambers. As you were just told, you are obligated to do a needs-based budget, and we have a number of those. Some that I would point out would be class size reduction, implementing the Evergreen Study. I would also like to see an emphasis on technology support positions because currently, many schools share our CISO-classified employee. But Murphy works in strange ways, and the day that the CISO is at the other school is always the day that the computer lab or the technology that you've signed up to use as a teacher is most likely to go down and cause all manner of problems for instruction. And unlike snow days, that's not a day of instruction that we can always easily make up because technology is in high demand. My building has over 500 pieces of technology, but we share one person to maintain that technology with two other schools. That's an area I would like for you to look at in particular. Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to address the board during this public hearing? Yes, this is the public hearing. Seeing none, we'll move on to Item 9, Consent Agenda Items. Dr. Martin.
On the consent agenda this evening at the minutes of the December 11th regular meeting, the December 12th School Board Orientation Meeting, the December 13th Joint Legislative Reception, and donations which are usual and customary, staff asks that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Martin to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero to approve the consent agenda. Item 10, informational items that were included in this are the Commonwealth Governor's Goal School Board Agenda, the Head Start Items, Discipline Report for November, and items for the February 12th Board Meeting. The instructional highlight and recognitions and awards for this evening are not available because the students were not in school today. So we'll move on to Item 13, Public Comments. Dr. Martin.
The public comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time for the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. Our first speaker is Mike Smith.
My name is Michael Smith. I live at 9003 Chancery Court, Spotsylvania, Virginia, in the Livingston District. First off, I want to say Happy New Year to Dr. Baker, the members of the school board, both returning and new. And I know there was a lot going on in 2017, and I have hope and a lot of faith for 2018. And I want to especially thank Dr. Martin. I've sent a couple requests for information, and they were answered in a timely manner, and it provided some really good information that otherwise you just might not know or might not get, and it really helps. And I thank you and you and your staff, and the financial staff as well, for those responses. I have a lot of hope for 2018. I hope everyone else does, and I know we've talked some about the budgets, and, you know, the budgets have been passed over the last couple of years. People get a little concerned about tax rates and things like that. But tax rates haven't gone up. Additional monies have been provided to the schools, and we now know that we have a better economy here in Spotsylvania, Virginia. So perhaps some good things can come out for the residents and the students of the year for 2018, for the FY19 budget. I mean, we don't even know what the surplus is going to be for FY18 because we don't know until the end of June, for those that aren't familiar with the scheduling of the budget. I just want to talk about a couple of things here. I don't know who reads stuff online or the Freelance Star, so I'm just going to talk about a couple of things real quick here. December 28th, 2017, Freelance Star letter to the editor accused school board member, Livingston District Kirk Twig, of making threats. Anyone who's ever met Kirk knows he would never make a threat, and I doubt he is even capable of making such a threat to anyone about anything. I know him as a kind, concerned, trustworthy man who only wants the best for the students of Spotsylvania. His standards for accountability and behavior are above reproach. The SCA president made a comment in the Freelance Star that Twig likes to play politics on a board that should have no political agenda, yet their own union supported a recent candidate for the Board of Supervisors. You can't have it both ways, and you don't decide who the school representative of Livingston District will be. Kneeling during the National Anthem is disruptive, and as a veteran, 20 years active duty in United States Marine Corps, I stand for the National Anthem, and I stand with Kirk Twig. Thank you. Happy New Year.
Victorine Lipscomb.
Good evening. I'm Victorine Lipscomb. I live in Abilie at South Point in Spotsylvania, Virginia. I was employed September 2016, June 2016, at Riverview Elementary. I was hired one day before school started. I spent my weekend cleaning a storage room that had no windows and lots of junk in it. I worked all weekend preparing for my 20 kindergarteners. I witnessed a kindergarten student being abused by two teachers, the kindergarten aide, and the assistant principal. I reported this to the counselor and the principal when it happened because it repeatedly happened. The principal did her investigation and said it was unfounded. To today, I have yet to have been interviewed by Child Protective Services about these allegations. Though it was unfounded, I have and had no reason to make a false report. I was berated, belittled, bullied, and harassed by the principal. She scored me low enough to classify me as a developing teacher, even after my students scored at a 95% pass rate in math and a 90% pass rate on the PALS test in reading. My students left, some of them on the third-grade reading level. We tested them so far that they told us to stop testing them. Since my contract has not been renewed by Spotsylvania Schools in September, October, they denied me unemployment benefits, and I had to have a hearing. But the judge declared I was not fired for misconduct. I was awarded my unemployment benefits. In November, you all passed Nesi, an outside Title I company who teaches Title I students in private schools, was approved by your school board. When they found out I was the teacher they had selected for this position, they rescinded my contract. In December, I applied for a teachers' aide position in the Fredericksburg City School System for a pilot program for suspended students in 5th to 7th grades. Little did I know until last week that the teacher who interviewed me was one of you sitting on this board today. I did not know that she was on the school board, and I surely did not get that assistant teacher's job. As a professional teacher and a school board member who just fired me, she should have recused herself. The conflict of interest, confidentiality breach, lack of professionalism and morality exhibited leads me to question the decision-making skills represented before me. Was it not unethical of her to interview me? Many more teachers are experiencing what I've experienced. This destroys our livelihood at a time in our lives when we need to make it to full retirement, especially when you're single like me. It saddens me that you have chosen to ruin my career, my life, and ability to get a job in a plethora of careers. Shame on you. You need to fix this. I'm losing my residence here in Spotsylvania. I have applied to several jobs throughout the state of Virginia and cannot get a job. And let me tell you that I graduated from Virginia State University in 1979, magna cum laude. I graduated in the year 2000, number one in my class with a Master's in Education for School Administration and Supervision from George Mason University. I am capable of teaching your children. I want to let you know I've never worked a day in my life. I've never worked. God has given me this gift to reach the children no one wants to have in our class. No one wants to teach. Teachers in my group last year sent their children to me, and yet they still have their jobs. I have several questions I need to ask, I need answers to. Do you condone students being abused in your schools? Do all of your principals berate, belittle, bully, and harass faculty and staff? Do you target and get rid of teachers based on their salary for budget cuts? Why didn't CPS interview me concerning my allegations? How can you still have schools where there are no black teachers, Hispanic teachers, Asian teachers, Native American teachers in them? How many of you would send your children to school with an all-black staff? Thank you for listening to me.
Gail Bracy.
Happy New Year, and thank you for having me here. My name is Gail Bracy. I live at 6124 Prospect Street, and I don't normally attend these type meetings, but I was very concerned. I have a grandson that goes to Cortland High School, and I read an article on December 28th concerning one of you, one of your members, Mr. Twig, making statements concerning the Cortland High School budget, that it could be possibly tampered with because of his political beliefs. And I looked at, from that point, I went and looked up your ethical standards, and it's number eight, and you should never bring politics into the educational system. I was surprised and very, very concerned that this committee is now tainted because of someone's opinion, an article that they wrote, and I saw no rebuttals from the school or the school board concerning that article. And I'd like to understand how you, as a board, would let us feel comfortable knowing that you gave every school a fair chance at their budget presentations. And I need to understand, do you just sit here and nod, or do we get answers? Thank you.
Courtney Howell.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin, staff, and audience members. My name is Courtney Howell. I live at 12326 Willow Woods Drive, Fredericksburg, Virginia, 22407. And I am a voting member in the Cortland District. Seems as though we live on the edge. I have come before you as a woman of many hats in this community, including Special Education Advisory Chair. But tonight, I come to you as a parent of two young children. One is in second grade and the other in kindergarten at Chancellor Elementary. First, I want to thank Ms. Palmer as the interim Lee Hill School Board Representative and for her time served. I hope she will remain an active member advocating for our students and our community, and I wish her the best in her future endeavors. Secondly, I always look forward to the reorganization of the board. It's like a symbol of exciting new changes to come, so I want to welcome you on your new and old positions, and thank you again for your continued service. Additionally, I want to congratulate Ms. Lisa Phelps and welcome her to the school board. Her passionate and loyal advocacy in our community on behalf of our students is unwavering. Her stewardship to Spotsylvania County comes from a pure and generous spirit, and her commitment to her family and our community, which I also want to thank personally for supporting her as a wife and mother during her campaign, is remarkable, and she has stand out as a leader in our community. The Lee Hill District members, you voted, and your voice was heard. I am excited for the positive changes to come with our new board. Tonight, members of the community will speak and have spoken about the fiscal needs of our school system. I also want to echo Mrs. Phelps' priorities to quote "hold one another accountable" and assure funds are allocated directly to the classroom. I want to encourage Spotsylvania County School Administration to remain transparent with the in-depth reviews, quote, "the in-depth reviews and simple-to-read accountability of expenses, tax revenues, and money received." I fully support Mrs. Phelps behind these statements, and I ask you to do the same. I once shared an anecdotal story with my IEP team about the 18th camel. In short, there were these three brothers mourning the death of their father. In his will, he left 17 camels to his sons. The oldest was to receive half, the second oldest was to receive a third, and the youngest was to receive one ninth. The three sons began to fight because 17 cannot be divided into halves, thirds, or even nines. A wise man heard this plight and offered his camel to the brothers to solve the conflict. So in reading back, the will with 18 camels, half of 18 equals nine, so he gave this oldest son nine camels, one-third of 18 equals six, so the middle son was given six, one-ninth of 18 equals two, so the youngest received two camels. Now, let's go back, do the math. Nine plus six plus two equals 17. They had one camel left over, and it was returned to the wise man. This story may sound mystical and even simple, but sometimes so is the solution. So to see the solution, we need to be willing to collaborate, changing the attitude of negotiation. Let's abandon the demands confrontation and concession approach that at best produces compromise. Let's keep in mind the common ground. Each one of you represents students of Spotsylvania County, our children, my children. We all have special skills and different perspectives to offer, but sometimes what we need to do is step back and be the wise man, looking at the situation through fresh eyes and deliver an 18th camel. I did want to add in a few considerations for the 2018-19 school year. I would feel remiss if I did not ask you to humbly consider a few things. The first is to increase the FTE at Chancellor Elementary for the vice principal from .5 to 1 in our budget. Currently, .5 FTE does meet the SOQ data, but since the inclusion of the Successful Autism Resource Program, the demands have changed. I am happy to discuss further and in more detail in later discussion, but I only have five minutes, and I believe the discussion warrants more time. I want to continue supporting this school, and I know you do too. By adding a full-time FTE for the vice principal, we will continue to decrease those educational gaps for the students enrolled in special education because teachers will have more support and time coming from a vice principal that is now shared between Berkeley and Chancellor. The current vice principal is hardworking and a champion for our special needs, but your current budget only allows us to support our students half the time she is really needed. Let's look beyond the numbers and simplify challenges. I encourage you to look at our programs like the wise man and ask you to deliver the 18th camel. Please also consider the projected increase in our 2018-19 school year for the special education students that are expected to increase to serving an additional 157. Last year, our federal funds...
Ms. Howell.
Yes?
Forgive me for interrupting, but I wanted to let you know that your time has expired. Would you like to request additional time from the board?
Yes, may I request to extend?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we give additional time.
Second.
Thank you. Please also consider the projected increase in our 2018-19 school year for special education students that are expected to increase to serving an additional 157. Last year, our federal funds were cut, and Dr. Baker, I know our teachers and other staff could at this point probably juggle in a circus the many hats they wear now to ensure the success of our students. I know you and I both extend our humble gratitude for the extra mile that they all extend themselves. These students deserve our best, just the same as the neurotypical child, and I am asking, I am requesting this as a humble parent of a child with special needs who is extraordinary. Please fully fund and expand our programs in special education in the 2018-19. Please fully fund and expand our programs in special education in the 2018-19 budget. I want to also add how pleased I am to see our schools build special education programs to be more inclusive and remain intellectually rigorous. I want to give a special nod to Mr. Hudson, Principal at Chancellor Elementary and staff, for the Blue Ribbon nomination for 2018-19 school year. For those who do not know, the National Blue Ribbon Schools program recognizes schools whose students achieve at very high levels and schools making significant progress in closing academic achievement gaps among different groups of students. So thank you to Chancellor Elementary staff. This is an outstanding achievement. Again, Mrs. Phelps, I am elated and overjoyed to welcome you to our board tonight. I know your character as a citizen of this community and as a parent willing to advocate for the uncompromising success of our students and ensuring our teachers are supported. Thank you again for your service.
Hi, I'm Candace Aguilar. I'm at 7412 Pullen at the Chancellor District. I was coming in reference to the calendar. The calendar is messed up. The calendar needs to be changed for our children. Instead of starting a week early this year and a week early next year, you chose to take it away from our children. They are now starting not only earlier, but now we are also making up days that are banked. Fairfax County does not go to school on Thursdays due to their bank time. We are now making up two bank days that we have already in the bank. Why make up bank time before we use bank time? That is my question. Why are we going forward before pulling all the stuff that we already have? Why are we making our children go to school earlier without giving them the break that they need? They're already in school longer than what they're supposed to be. The children deserve to be children, not another number.
Madam Chair, that's all the speakers that signed up this evening.
Is there any in the audience that did not sign up that wishes to speak?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Holly Wickline. I reside in Stafford County. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I reside in Stafford County. I don't even have, I don't have anything written, so I'm going to shoot from the hip, so I'm not going to be as lucid and awesome as these people behind me were. However, I do want to preface the fact that I live in Stafford County with the fact that I just moved out of this county about four months ago. I moved out of this county to Stafford County. About ninety percent of the reason why I moved out of this county is a direct result of this school system. I resided here for eight years, with a child in the school system here for eight years. I paid taxes here for eight years. I also would like to include that I have a 32-year-old son, a product of public school systems from surrounding counties as well, Fairfax, Arlington, and Prince William. I myself am a graduate from Fairfax County High School. So I say this because I like to think that I have some relative experience with school systems and school boards. Not only did I have children in these school systems, I was an active parent on the PTOs here, constantly volunteering at the schools, hours of volunteering. I can't tell you how many hours I've spent at a copier making copies for teachers for an entire grade. One of those reasons was because my son was visually impaired and had a 504 accommodation, and I didn't want to put the burden on the teachers of having to make all the enlargement and copies for them. So while I was standing there, I would continue to make all the copies for the school. Unfortunately, what my family experienced here and what my child had to endure in this school system is what made me leave. What we endured, and the list is too long for me to even list, but I'm going to give you two examples. My son had a 504 accommodation, and as a result, permanently lost vision as a result of a teacher not following his 504. It took me months to get this administration to hear me. I pulled my son out of school. I homeschooled him. I begged, I cried, I pleaded. I went to the top. One of the most disappointing things that I found, when I believed that that solution finally came to me, I have to say that one of the most disappointing moments of my life has been what I have discovered since then. I finally got it resolved. Do I probably still have a lawsuit against this system? Yes, I do, but I'm not interested in that. I was just trying to get things right for my son. But what I had to go through to get it done was disgusting. The straw that roped the camel's back was that my son was being mistreated on a school bus, not by other students. I had to lawyer up to get it fixed. I emailed to the top of this school system, begged, pleaded, cried. All I got was circle the wagons, protect our own, let her be that mom. This system allows people and pushes people to have to be that mom or that parent and to lawyer up to get anything done. The reason why is the political influence. I see it constantly. So the way I was treated in this county and the way my son was treated in this county led me to take a deeper look at what was going on. I couldn't believe it. Again, I'm the mother of a 32-year-old. I had a lot of dealings with school boards. When he was younger, all of the parents on the school board were there for the children. All I see here is politics, nothing but politics, but yet you scream, "There's no politics." If we all had a dime and a dollar for every time the SCA political organization has carried their hind end up here to demand something and to push this school board around, y'all wouldn't need to talk about fully funding a budget. You'd have all the money you needed, because the school board representatives on here do exactly what the SCA wants, just so you can get reelected for your political powers. That's it. You're not doing it for the kids. It's all on a political agenda. We have a human being, a lady, that comes down to this county every meeting, every board of supervisors meeting, every school board meeting, and sits down here and takes notes. It's disgusting. And it's all, that lady is from the National Education Association. It's a far-leaning, left-wing organization pushing our county around. This woman doesn't live here, she doesn't reside here, and she doesn't pay taxes here. Can I please have an extension?
Recommend extension.
Second.
Are we extending from the time because she's not, oh, now she's done, okay.
Yeah, I was getting ready to get done. I just called it ahead of time.
Yeah, extend it next to the five.
Motion, Mr. Twiggs, second, and Ms. Shelley, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0.
So on top of my heated rant today, all I'm here to ask you is to stop playing politics. And just because the people of Lee's Hill have elected someone to this school board that whose opinion you may not like, put your politics aside. We're all educators. Old dogs can learn new tricks. Listen, hear what's being said. Just because the opinion doesn't jive with what you want or what you believe to be true doesn't mean it's not what the people of Lee's Hill want and what the residents of this county deserve and what the students of this county deserve. The opinions don't all match yours. They're not going to, but that doesn't mean they're politically motivated. That means there's actually somebody that was willing to stand up here and go against the grain and have their family threatened. Their family, their children were threatened, called horrendous names. I'm going to guess that maybe that person is up here for the right reasons. Maybe somebody that's willing to put their family through something like that is actually here because they care about the kids. They're just not willing to slide with the grain and say, be yes-men and do whatever that organization that helps yourself get elected to this board wants them to do. So just because the opinion isn't popular doesn't mean it's not right and doesn't mean it's not what the people of Spotsylvania County want. So I'm here to ask you to check yourselves. You're not as high as you think you are, and unfortunately, a lot of parents like me were working stiffs. We go to work all day, we come home, we put our kids to bed, we do their homework, get them to bed, throw in a load of laundry. We're exhausted. We don't have the time to pay attention to these school board meetings like we should. We just don't. So we have to inherently trust that you people are doing the right thing. Just because they're not all up here talking to you doesn't mean they don't need you to do the right thing. Not just the people with the power and trying to push your buttons and trying to get you reelected need to be heard. Think about the voices that may not necessarily be able to come in here and talk. They have voices too. Listen to them. Make real decisions, not just ones you think that are supposed to be made.
That's all the speakers, Madam Chair.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the school board and public comments?
Hello, everyone. My name is Robin Wild, and I'm in the Lee Hill District. I have a fourth grader at Spotswood Elementary, and I have a kinder, I will have a kindergartner in the fall at Spotswood. Very happy with Spotswood, love Mr. Brown, love Mr. Armstrong. This is my first board meeting ever, and I'm a little ashamed that I haven't been here prior to this, considering I have a fourth grader in Spotsylvania County. And I'm sitting here tonight because I'm here to support somebody that's newly been elected. And I got to tell you, I was pretty naive about this whole process prior to Ms. Phelps' running. And I got to tell you, to echo some of Ms. Wickline's sentiments, I'm a little bit disgusted by what I witnessed during the election time, most of it on social media. God bless social media, huh? And coming off the very ugly presidential election we had last year, it really was unsettling to see how dirty y'all play. And it was on all facets of, you know, there was a lot of just ugly mudslinging, and as a parent, having witnessed that, I'm concerned. Is this who's in charge of my children's education? People that make these kinds of accusations, tear down signs, make awful, disgusting allegations about people that I know personally and love? It frightens me, and I hate to tell you this, but you're going to see me at a lot more school board meetings now. And that might be a good thing, that might be a bad thing, but I'm grateful for the awareness that I did receive because a good friend decided to run for the school board, somebody that doesn't fit the mold, somebody that's just a parent, somebody that we need, somebody that's going to speak for us and is not worried about lobbying. So I just wanted to share my concern and my gratitude. For those of you that publicly serve, I'm not here to attack you all. I appreciate that you suit up and you show up and that you do the job that's necessary. I would just ask you, I would implore you to bring your hearts to these meetings, to bring your hearts into these decisions, and to remember that you were all once children too.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Seeing them move on to 13.02, board member comments, is there any board member that would like to address? Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I appreciate all the comments that were made by the public in terms of the budget and also their concerns in regards to the schools. I generally don't make a point of responding directly to comments that were made, but I will tell anyone that's out here listening that when Baron Braswell offered to run as a school board member, he never did it for politics. See, after I lost my son in a senseless act of violence, I volunteered my time, I volunteered my time to this community, and I always did it for the benefit of the children. If there's ever any indication that I don't do it for the benefit of the children, I'd ask those people to be fair with me and reevaluate the work that I've done. For me, Spotsylvania County children are very important. Now, of course, we're a board. There's a lot of things that we hear and we don't hear, but if we don't have an opportunity to hear complaints, then we don't have an opportunity to solve problems or at least stand before you and give you an honest answer as to why things are the way they are. At this point, I had never heard any of these points of concern from any of the constituents. However, I'll just say this, as far as Baron Braswell, the man is concerned. I've always been very concerned about each and every child in Spotsylvania County. My record shows that that's what I am, and I would challenge someone to say otherwise. Not saying that to be a sense of bravado, I'm just saying because that's speaking from my heart. That's who I am. Now, with that being said, there's a lot of discussion about the budget that's going on next year. I plan to meet with some of the boards of supervisors, already had coordinating meetings to sit down with these gentlemen and have a conversation. Some things we'll agree on, some things we won't, but we won't harp on what we disagree on, we'll just work on what we do agree on, because honest people can have differences of opinion. And so I truly look forward to having those conversations, those engagements with my colleagues on the board of supervisors. I understand the job that they have to do, and it's a very difficult job, but I respect it, but I would consider that they understand the job that we have to do is very difficult, and I trust and know that they respect us for the work that we have to do. So I'm looking forward to that. I know it sounds funny, looking forward to a budget season, but a budget is nothing more than a financial expression of what you value. And so we have to do the hard work of talking numbers, and sometimes those discussions bring up a little rancor, but it shouldn't cause us to diminish who we are as young, as men and women that represent the children of Spotsylvania County. I appreciate the comments that were made in terms of the criticisms that were made and some personnel issues. We can't discuss personnel issues in public. I look forward to looking into some of these allegations that were made and find out what's going on with them and to make sure that we have an opportunity to resolve any misunderstandings, if there are misunderstandings, or any grievances, if there are grievances. And if there aren't grievances, be frank with you and tell you that there's not any. But that's what our job is, but we have to have the opportunity to know that there's a problem before we can fix it. So with that being said, I just wanted to tell you that I look forward to these engagements with the board of supervisors to work on behalf of Spotsylvania County schools, but I also want to reassure the public that as for Baron Braswell, my record speaks for itself. I always put children first, and I'll just leave it at that.
Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Phelps for being with us this evening and for joining us, and I look forward to working with her, and I think we'll be most probably working together sometimes on committee assignments. That'll be determined by the chair, but I do want to thank her for running and for offering herself up for four years of service. It is a service of dedication to the students. Also, congratulations to Ms. Graham and Ms. Shelley for their, for assuming leadership roles and working with us. And with that, I also want to thank Mr. Braswell. I think he expressed well, sometimes when speakers bring their thoughts and they express certain things dealing with personnel matters or student matters, we as a board cannot comment on those up here, but they are dealt with, you know, through the superintendent and staff, but we just cannot comment, whether it's Child Protective Services, any of those matters, we cannot. So with that, I pass. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Shelley?
Thank you, Ms. Graham. I also want to congratulate Ms. Phelps.
I also want to congratulate Ms. Phelps, and I'm going to say Lisa, because I have known Lisa for a number of years. We worked together on the CAC Committee with our special education, love of special education. So, welcome. Congratulations. Also, thank you for the comments, Mr. Braswell and Dr. Meyer. And as again, what they said about personnel issues cannot be spoken, and we can chat about those later if we need to. Also, the political piece, it's, I just wanted to say that we, on this board, if you are a school board member, you have to be nonpartisan. So saying that someone is left or right, or wherever they are, someone has to be nonpartisan to be a school board member. An endorsement by a political party is one thing, but as a board member, we are all nonpartisan. So just to remind everybody of that as well. So, thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for being here. We have a very nice crowd, and Happy New Year.
I'd just like to formally welcome Ms. Phelps to our board. Congratulations, and look forward to working with you. Welcome aboard.
I just wanted to say a few things. Can you guys hear me? This is my first time. I wanted to thank God and my husband Scott, and my mom, and my family, and my friends in Spotsylvania County community. They keep me grounded and supports me day after day. I thank everybody out there greatly, from the bottom of my heart. I'm honored and humbled to be up here, to be the representative for Lee Hill District, but to be representative for us, for Spotsylvania County. I'm here as a public servant to be a voice for Spotsylvania County community, and I am very grateful to every single person, whether they come up here and they share, or whether they send an email or call. Because the only way, like Mr. Braswell said, that we're gonna be able to make things better here and do the right thing, is to know about it and to have knowledge. And that's all I have to share, and I'm just grateful. My name, my email address is out there. If anybody in the community wants to email me, my phone number's out there. I want to be open and transparent, and that's who I am. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Phelps, and welcome, and we all look forward to working with you. And we'll move on to item 14, Special Reports, 14.01, Board Committee Reports. I know Dr. Meyer has a board committee report to read for Mr. Blaine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, on behalf of Mr. Blaine, who is not able to be with us in person, he presented two quick reports. One for the Spotsylvania Career and Technical Center, that will have its open house scheduled for February the 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. It's a time for the 9th and 10th grade high school students, and 7th and 8th grade middle school students to come out and see the many opportunities that are available at the Spotsylvania Career and Technical Center, as we enter students' classes planning time for the 18-19 school year. Also, the Career and Technical Center is proud to announce that the cosmetology student, Rukma Zahir, is one of five Spotsylvania County students to receive the Eagle Award Scholarship. And the Career and Technical Center is beginning to prepare for District Skills USA Contest to be held at the Career and Technical Center, and Northern Neck Technical Center, and Stafford High School, March 9th and 10th. Health Occupation Students will be preparing for the State HOSA Competition in Williamsburg, March 16th through the 18th. Also, to give a shout out to the Commonwealth Governor's School, that during the academic year, this past year, during this current year, 17-18, the CGS is celebrating its 20th anniversary, and Riverbend High School hosted the Alumni CGS Patron Breakfast on December the 20th. The Spotsylvania County Administrative Staff, School Board Members, County Supervisors, and past governing board members representing Spotsylvania County were invited to attend. We were very happy that Dr. Martin Wilder, former school board member, was present to address the group, and thanks Marty for being there. Several CGS alumni from Riverbend's site who attended the event, as well as current students, spoke about their learning experience. There were 12 former students dating back to 2001, 2007, 2012, 15, 16, and 17, and there were four current students from the classes of 18, 19, 21, who also spoke about their experiences. It was really rewarding to see the alumni come out to support the 20th anniversary celebration. It was quite an event. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to caveat with Dr. Meyer, mentioned, myself, I believe, Ms. Phelps, Dr. Meyer, and Ms. Shelley all attended. It was a really wonderful experience to see the product that Spotsylvania County Schools are producing, especially with our Commonwealth Governor's School students. Young people are doing some really amazing things, and it brought joy to my spirit to see them come back and give a testimony as to what Spotsylvania County Schools have done on their behalf, and I'm excited to see how much further in life they will go. And that, also, I just wanted to say that I know, because we have a new member on the school board, we will be having a Head Start Training. I know it's doing one of the workshops, I don't know if it's this one or the next one coming up, but we'll have Head Start Training, so be prepared for that.
Ms. Shelley?
Thank you, Ms. Graham. We held a food-- there was a Food Task Force meeting back in December, and what we found out was our student, our amount of student negative balance is going down a little bit, and we have started calling the parents twice a week instead of just once on Friday. We also, the Sadexo is trying new meals. They're having students try them, and then they are coming into the cafeteria. Meals, sales are going up. Our revenues for meals is going up every-- this year since it was from last year. We have also started some grab-and-go breakfasts in some of our buildings, and that is a big hit as well. Thank you.
Dr. Meyer?
As a committee report, also, the Fleet Services Steering Committee meeting is coming up now on Thursday, January the 18th, and I'll be able to report out the results of that committee meeting at our first meeting in February.
Any other board committee reports? Hearing then, we'll move on to item 15.01, Second Reading and Approval to Revisions to School Board Policies, VSB A, May 2017 Policy Review. This will be the second reading, so we've already approved the first, and there were no changes that I was aware of, so we can have a motion to approve this.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve for second reading, VSB A, May 2017 Policy Updates.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Mr. Braswell. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. On to 15.02. Mrs. Gaines, would you join us for the second reading approval to provisions to school board policy, DJ Small Purchasing, and DJ R1 Purchasing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin, when looking at the policies that are before you this evening, you'll first see DJ, Pages 1 and 2. Here, we're basically making sure that we're properly using the true school name. When you go to the regulation, which is DJ R1, Page 1, just clarifying to make sure we're consistent with current practice. Everything that you see in red are basically the first reading changes from the last meeting. On Page 2, just making sure that purchases must take into account the sum of all phases, which is currently consistent with our practice. Page 3, just clarification. Page 4, additional clarification. Then on Page 5, the language you see here is in blue. This language only relates to IFBs, which are invitations for bids. This provision does not relate to requests for proposals, as there's already a right to negotiate when you look at RFPs. So again, this is additional language that was added by legal counsel. Page 6, just clarification, to be consistent with current practices. Same with Page 7, as well as Page 8. At this time, staff would like to recommend that you approve the presentation as presented.
So move, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer to--
Reading approval for DJ.
Approve, second reading approval for DJ, and a second by Mr. Twig. Any discussion? Ms. Shelley?
I noticed something on here that I think is going to expect, affect our special education, is now we have to go out for bid for professional services over $60,000. So that includes our--
OTs and PTs.
PT, speech, and all of those that we had not gone out for bid before, but now, did we, I don't think we went out for bid for those before.
We only went off a bid when it exceeded $100,000, so it's actually not new--
Okay.
--in terms of the bids.
Okay.
You just now have a lower threshold.
Now, it's a lower threshold, so that could affect our special education-related services.
And I would say would affect it in a positive manner--
Yes.
--because now you're doing more competition.
Yeah, I like it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to 16.01, any unfinished business? 16.02, any new business? Mr. Twig?
Just one item. Historically, our board's chosen to not record, tape, or stream its daytime sessions. Don't know really the reasons why, I really don't care. I think we can do a whole lot better with this, and we have to start taping all public sessions. We need 100% accuracy in record of events and occurrences and statements, and transparency to this entire community of 133,000 people, I think, is commanding and necessary. The constituents in my humble Livingston District insist on it. It's time we start taping all of these sessions. Thereby, I'm making a motion that, as of this moment, we tape all future work sessions, and put another way, just start taping all public sessions. Do we have a second?
I second.
Call for a second.
Motion by Mr. Twig, and I guess we'll get to discussion, to tape work sessions in the future, and second by Mrs. Phelps. Discussion, Ms. Shelley?
I'm sorry, I just have a question. When you say "tape," do you mean with the video, or is it audio recording?
Stream, tape, audio, whatever the--
So is it just like even an audio recording?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and the, you know, do we have a, I know because our streaming, we have a contract for a certain number, so that's why I wanted costing-wise, money-wise, but if it's, we can record with a, I'm not gonna say old-fashioned tape recorder, because there's no, there's newfangled stuff, but if that, is that sufficient, Mr. Twig?
Oh, yes, yes, just some record, is what I'm saying, but an official 100% record.
Our work sessions, though, are currently--
Not taped.
Are taped. I think you're mixing up workshops, sir, and work sessions, which is a word that we had a discussion about the other day.
Then I'm using the term "session" generally speaking.
So are you including professional development for the board?
All public sessions.
Okay, so if the board meets, you would like it to be taped, so all professional development, board development--
There you go, to be extenuating.
Retreats.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Shelley?
I'm sorry, so, but those would be in-house, so we go to professional development outside of Spotsylvania County as well, so that needs not to be recorded.
I would concur.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I just want to make sure I get clarification. So we're saying, regular school board meetings, which are always televised anyway, workshops when we are here, and the county school session, and any professional development that is internally done, will that also include the legislative priorities and legislative agent that we just recently hosted? Would that include that as well? And if it does, does that require consent of other agencies, all the attendees?
I would not think so. I'm just talking about meetings where we have a quorum, where we have to vote on things and discuss things.
But we don't vote on, in workshops or in professional development.
I am aware.
So do you only want things recorded where there's business done, where motions are made? We're trying to clear the policy up.
Sure. No, not just that. If we have a 1 o'clock session, that's historically not taped, been not--
Well, that is a workshop, and there's no business done during the workshop.
I'm including, incorporating that into the effort here, to have it start being taped.
Madam Chair, I don't, and I don't disagree with the intent of what Mr. Twig's motion is. I would like to find out, or have research done for us, before we make a decision, and table this about the endorsement of other, like, for example, when the General Assembly comes, or some members of the General Assembly come and visit with us, you know, do we have to get consent from them first, or the State Senate, do we have to get consent from those particular people first, before we record something of that nature? And when we have other school board members that come from other localities, would that pertain to that? So I'd like to get an answer to that. I don't know, it's not that I'm against what Mr. Twig's desire is, I just want to make sure that we clear up all the legal ramifications for it.
Dr. Meyer?
Mr. Twig, if you would just clarify, clarify in your request whether you're speaking to audio tapes, or are you speaking of video live streaming? There, I think you need to distinguish between the two.
I'd say any or either.
The latter, the video streaming means we got, we have a contract, so that's gonna entail costs. Audio is done in-house, you know, not necessarily contracting out, and not intended for broadcasting.
Sure.
But if you're looking to broadcast, I think it's a much broader question, so clarify, please.
I concur. Let's not forget the focus here, and that's to get 100% transparency to anybody who wants the information. For clarity, let's just say, let's start with these 1 to 4 o'clock meetings we're gonna have a lot of over the next two months for both budget and workshops, and leave it at that. And as far as--
That didn't answer his question, whether you wanted it video streamed or recorded.
Right. And that last piece, just have a record, whether it's, as long as we can put it on the web.
We keep a record already. There's, we've never had a meeting by law that doesn't have minutes, and they're always open to the public.
And I'm not speaking of minutes, I'm speaking of audio slash, or, audio or visual, or both.
Madam Chair, again, I don't disagree with Mr. Twig's intent, and I think that if we want to make sure that we do it correctly, we should find that information out, so we can make a good decision and move forward with it, and I would just like to make a motion to table until our next meeting, so that we can gather the information that's required to make a good decision. Because-- required to make a good decision, because his intent is understandable, and that we can go from there.
I agree. I just, while we're fact-finding, as I asked Mr. Twig to look up before he brought this up this week, I've, I asked him if he knew of any other, either professional organizations that aren't school boards or any other school boards. I'm not aware of any that record professional development in any other way besides record minute keeping, which is what we do, which are available to the public and posted. But I'm a member of other boards and corporate land, as well as the public sector, that do not do that for professional development. So I was just inquiring if someone would like to look that up as well to find out if there is a standard.
First of all, can I, may I speak?
Ms. Phelps.
Oh, sure. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have a quick question. So the board workshop session that's coming up on Friday, since I'm new here and I've attended meetings, however, I haven't really noticed, are those workshop sessions recorded? And are we able to go back, just like we are at this meeting, and watch them? That would be my question. As a governing body of Spotsylvania County Public Schools, I think it's imperative to capture accurate information and to be transparent, and so that's why I'd like to know if we do currently record our work session meetings and...
We do record work sessions.
And are we able to, is the public able to go back and watch it?
Yes, work sessions are recorded, and the public is able to go back and look at work sessions.
Okay, so this coming Friday at 1:30...
Is a workshop.
And the workshop will be recorded, and people will be able to watch it?
We have never done that before. A workshop and a work session are different. Work session, there's business done, there's voting. A workshop is professional development and team building for the board. It is more of a retreat. There's no votes, no motions, no business at a workshop.
Okay, so the workshop is not recorded?
Not typically.
Okay.
There are minutes taken, and they are available for the public.
So I think it's an effective way to continue open and transparency. I guess I've come to expect that any public bodies would be open and transparent to have video recording of any work sessions or workshops, and that's just for me.
Again, I think we, I mean, we could also put in, while we're tabling it, we could ask for the increased cost of that, because that would be almost doubling our live streaming if we want it to be videoed, recorded. So that would be doubling the budget, I would assume. Mr. Braswell?
I just, I just think that, I don't disagree with the intent of the motion by Mr. Twig or the second by Ms. Phelps. I think the intent of it's very good. I just, I think before we vote, we should have that information on the table so that we can make a good decision as it pertains to not only the cost, but when we're dealing with external agencies or external stakeholders, you know, how we have to treat that.
Or even our presenters that present during professional development, the legal counsel factor...
Precisely.
Those sort of things. We have to figure out what's legal. So do we want to vote on the table?
Point of discussion, please.
Mr. Twig.
First of all, our minutes are like eight sentences of a four-hour meeting. I have experienced that. That said, I'm not one to, that has to find in a case like this, historical record. I'm a pace setter. I'm a trend setter. I think this school has some challenges that we have to encounter to set and the pace and be trend setters. I'd be willing to add the term workshop into the motion, which I think could satisfy a whole lot for the present tense, instead of tabling this for sometime in the future, and the dollars should not matter. IT has a budget, and we should be able to factor all of that in without any consequence. That's my perspective. Thank you.
Are we ready to vote on tabling, and then if that fails, we vote on that motion, correct? So you voted, you motioned to table.
Make the motion to table, yes.
Do we have a second?
I will second that because I think we should have all the information on hand, and I think we should distinguish between whether you're giving, whether we are preparing an audio record or whether we're preparing a video livestream record. There's a difference between the two.
And the costs involved.
And the costs that go with it. I'm not opposed to the record-keeping. I think we should talk about when we're doing workshop time, which was developed for, as a retreat, and it's a time for the board to exchange ideas, you know, once you have running a camera rolling, it can curtail, don't say it will, but it can curtail discussion and open and frank dialogue. But if the majority of the board wants to go that direction, we just need to know the cost and whether those people are available, because once we schedule a time, then it means a contracted person who is running the videographer and has the equipment set up has to be available for that time period, whether it's four hours or whatever. It's just like our board meetings are scheduled in advance so those people know that they can have themselves available for it. So I think there are ramifications to it. I think it does merit, not that I'm opposed to it, but I think it does merit, let's get all the information, bring it out at our next meeting, and we can vote on it. So I second the motion for table. There should be no further discussion. Should call for the question.
All those in favor of tabling this motion?
Madam Chair, put a specific timetable on that.
Until the February meeting?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that it will be table until the February meeting? Any other new business? Okay. I just would feel remorse if I didn't wrap up this evening by saying, "Go dogs," and can I have a motion to adjourn?
Right here. You got six of them, five of them.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Bless you.